I don't think I'd be included on these latest emails.
Which one did you get?
I think it's the newsletter from the anonymous source.
I think it's worse.
Oh, I sent it out?
Yeah, you probably didn't, it's an attachment.
It went out, oh, okay, it went out last week.
Well, I heard the first, that's the first one.
Well, I've only gotten one letter, there's two, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I haven't even had any permit to do that.
I haven't seen it.
To do one.
He said he thinks Jennifer wants to become, but I don't have the...
Oh, no, that's enough.
We've got to stop him and he's not going to accept your stuff. I like the...
Joan, you're so far away.
But, all right, I thought you could come over here.
That's right, there isn't technically a sign, see it, right?
Yes, there is.
There is?
Yes.
Was it on cable?
No, you, well, in Canada, if nobody shows, if they don't show up, they're probably tired of this controversy, so they just like something.
No, no. I have a migraine, so I would like to move this along.
Well, I think, I think we've lost the battle, so I suspect that that would be... We had people pay.
What do you mean?
They've got to spend the money on both things, don't they? To finish up the...
Actually, then why do you need me here?
I know, I'm good with cash.
Business card.
This is Jennifer.
Oh, my goodness.
You'll call me that's why. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and as the Republic for which stands, one nation, united in the principle of liberty, justice, and all. I hope people remember the guy who said all, all.
Did you have enough seats for Jennifer Trumps?
I guess this is... Jennifer, yeah, that's just Jennifer here. I guess you can move over if Jennifer isn't coming, yes.
I don't want to break any rules.
Do you know if Jennifer's coming?
We'll just take...
I'm cool.
We could just spread out.
No.
It is way too long.
So at this time, all the councilors are here except Councilor DiLorenzo and Councilor Marshall Neely. We will take presentations and announcements.
First presentation.
Yep, she's coming.
Here she is.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is my first time before, a lot of new council members, so welcome to your job, Mayor, and others. It's a difficult thing, public service, but you learn a lot and you go a lot, and your service to the town is much appreciated. So tonight, I'm here for the purposes of honoring an incredible Bloomfield citizen, who is, which is a good way to put it, who is Donna Landerman, who has been an incredible advocate on behalf of her community, an organizer and an advocate. And what I have for Donna is a citation from the state of Connecticut. It's from me, it's from Senator McCrory, and from Representative Derek Slapp. Derek does not represent Bloomfield, but he feels that he has represented Donna and wanted to be on the citation with her. So, the whole General Assembly, Donna, I don't know if you want to stand up, if that will make yourself constipated. You can even come up with me.
That was, that was a little out of order, but that was wonderful.
I've never been that in order.
All right. Well, you did, you can be out of order sometimes, so it's appropriate.
So the General Assembly says, "Be it be here and unknown to all, that the Connecticut General Assembly offers its sincerest congratulations to Donna Landerman in recognition of your heart, your skill, your tenacious advocacy for our most precious resource, water, your ability to inspire civic engagement, and your role in founding the public advocacy groups, Bloomfield Citizens, and Save Our Water. The Bloomfield Town Council, the Connecticut General Assembly, expresses its heartfelt thanks for your commitment to a better Bloomfield. The membership extends its best wishes on this memorable occasion." It's signed by Marty Looney, the Senate President, by Joe Krasnicki, Speaker of the House, and by Denise Merrill, the Secretary of State, making an official citation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You're very welcome. And while we're going to piggyback on your citation, Donna has been a Bloomfield resident for over 20 years, and she loves to hike, and she loves to agitate people to action. And I know that we are better for knowing you, and the way that you inspire others with your wonderful mantra, because you love your town. So we do salute you today. And Bloomfield, as I said, is much better because of you. So thank you very much for your service. Any other announcements or presentations? Citizen's statements and petitions?
Robert Berman, Aitheirum Lane. Madam Mayor, you have in the past permitted others to exceed the five-minute rule. May I do so also?
Can you tell me how many people are on the list? I'm going to ask you please to be as brief as possible.
I will be, thank you. I'm speaking tonight as an individual resident of Bloomfield, and also as an individual member of the Human Services Building Committee. I am not speaking on behalf of the committee itself, just as one individual member. As most of you are aware, I only deal in real facts, not those made up by other people. Let's get some fakes, some facts straight again. Please note that all the estimated costs are simply that, estimates. Until and unless the project goes out to bid, no one knows what the real cost will be. The demolition of the existing building itself is estimated to be $1,050,000. The abatement of hazardous materials is estimated to be another $835,000. The cost of removing the pavement and the renovation of the space to incorporate the soccer field is estimated to be another $100,000. These numbers total $1,985,000. Total estimated cost for the building itself excluding these figures is $23,222,000. Of this amount, $2 million are the different contingency funds. The voters approved a bond issue of $22,300,000. If we presume that our bids on the actual cost of construction comes in at a 3% less than the estimated construction cost of $19 million, which amounts to a savings of $540,000, this results in a cost for the building of $22,682,000, which is an overage of $382,000. This overage more than likely can be made up out of the $2 million contingency fund. The bond referendum specifically said, and I quote, "contemplated to include the demolition of approximately 92,000 square foot building on the site, and the charges in the building committee only deal with the construction of a new facility. Nor in the charges is there any wording that we need to consider the demolition of the existing building. The building committee has done so because it has recognized that this issue needs to be dealt with also. It has been well established the existing structure of 330 Park Avenue does not provide an ideal building for the services that the three departments provide to the citizens of Bloomfield, nor is it a building that can be adequately maintained at a reasonable cost. Some rooms are overly hot, others are overly cold. In addition, on the lower level where flooding from the antiquated heating system occurs, the asbestos houses are no longer firmly in place and are dangerous. These rooms where, those rooms where this has occurred cannot be used. In addition, there are no sprinkler system in the building, nor to put a sprinkler system in the building, we would have to go above the existing ceiling into spaces where there are more than likely is asbestos material that would have to be abated an additional cost, and the programs using the building would have to be moved to another location. From the minute this council took office, they have stopped the building committee from proceeding to going out for bids, determining whether or not the project can be completed for no more than $22,300,000 approved by the voters of Bloomfield. At least two members of this town council have been heard to remark that, quote, "Now we can get the library redone." At the Finance Subcommittee meeting held on November 28, 2017, all five members of the Finance Committee voted to recommend to the full town council that the building committee be permitted to go out for bid. The special town council meeting on December 4, 2017, four of the same people voted against the recommendation to permit the building committee to go out to bid. This is called, quote, "Death by a thousand little cuts," close quote. At this process, at this point, the process is already a month behind schedule. Instead of going out to bid in a very favorable environment, bidding will be done under less than ideal conditions. Then closing the building, presuming as the bids do come in, so the project is under budget, is probably not going to happen by November of 2018, which means an additional expense for plastic sheeting and heating, so the interior work can get done over the winter. That will cost, according to our construction management, from $50,000 to $60,000 per month. This will add at least $150,000 of unnecessary expense to the cost. The Fire Marshal and the Town Building Inspector have held off requiring the town to deal with the health, safety, and code issues, as well as the federally mandated disability issues, because a new building would be in place in the very near future. This council will have to deal with the consequences of senior services, leisure services, and social services having to relocate elsewhere if the existing building is shut down. The town's Director of Finance never said that the town could easily go out to referendum for another $40 million without any effect on the town's borrowing cost, contrary to what a member of this town council has said. It's become increasingly obvious to me that a majority of the council have already decided to find ways to obstruct any real progress on the referendum already approved by the voters. I've heard the following excuses given. One, there is no pamphlet available that residents know what is going on. Two, the project is so far over budget that it cannot go on. Three, the building committee has to include an indoor swimming pool, a generator, and solar panels in its bid process. Four, I've never seen a drawing or description of what the outside and inside of the building will look like. Five, the initial process was flawed, therefore it all has to start over. Six, we can shift the money from a new building to renovate the existing building. Seven, we don't need a new building, the staff and seniors are happy with the existing building. The only one of these points that bears any resemblance to reality is that the initial process was flawed. That is also true of the Public Works Project as well, but I've not heard any objection to that project. When I examined the concern for how the taxpayers' fund or expend in relation to new human services building, after comparing that to the presentation just made recently regarding the Philly Park Project, the town engineer stood before you, said that the project was short $2 million. Now, one of your questions, or better than I, is the fact that this project was short this amount of funds, nor did any of you ask what the total cost of the project was. Interesting observation, I think. In conclusion, I ask you, as residents of this town, as an individual member of the building committee, do one of two things tonight, either officially kill the project here and now, or permit the building committee to go out to bid on what has been designed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Bob Morrissey, I live at 17 Arnold Drive. Last November, November 2016, there was an election, and in that election, there was a referendum for a human services building. 5,818 people voted for the human services building. I would consider that a political mandate. A building committee was created, there have been 30-plus meetings in the last 15 months, every meeting has been announced, there have been minutes to every meeting, there have been multiple presentations to the town council. That, from my perspective, is transparency. The question before the town council tonight is simple. Do you want to find out how much the building costs, and the demolition of the junior high school costs, or don't you? That's it. Unfortunately, there have been a number of distractions that have been introduced into the conversation to divert the attention away from that simple question, and those are: repair the existing building. In 2016, Senate work estimated the cost to be $32.8 million to renovate the existing building. And if you want to update those figures, do you really think in one year, those costs are going to go down? I don't think so. The second thing is to try to make the human services building something more than what's needed. Add solar panels, a pool, an unnecessary generator, or maybe even make it bigger. All of those would substantially increase the cost of the new building. Both of these distractions would exceed the bonding capacity of the town, so to bring them to the table now is kind of irrelevant. The Finance Committee, I know that Bob Berman mentioned this, but the last meeting of the Finance Committee unanimously voted to continue funding the process to get accurate bids. Yet last week, the town council reversed that vote. What happened? I don't know. The last town council was not televised. That's hardly transparent. You guys, I understand, had to go and have a private conversation in the last town council meeting, and that also is not particularly transparent. I think you should ask yourself, would you push ahead with this building if the money was there? Some time ago, I spoke with David Barron about the request for bonding grant from the state. He said that there was support for this project from the Majority Leader, Minority Leader, the head of the Bonding Commission, and the governor's staff. What seems to me is needed is for the new town council to respect the vote of 5,818 people and really support this project. Why not send a letter to the Bonding Commission supporting the project? Who knows? The request might even be funded. To those who say that the state will never have enough money to issue bonds in these tough budget times, I will point out that at the November 29 meeting of the Bonding Commission, they approved $673.3 million of bonding projects, and set a maximum bonding issue of $900 million for this go-around. It seems to me that the voter mandate to make this project a priority should be the priority of the town council. Do you think that way? If so, you should be aggressively looking for ways to make it a reality. Accurate construction cost, state bonding, and adding funds to Bloomfield's capital budget in 2018, 2019. I say that about the capital budget, because in both 2016 and 2017, in the budget message for the approved town council budget of Bloomfield, it said, "The town must be prepared to finance an aging infrastructure." I couldn't describe the junior high any better. Remember, twice as many people voted for this referendum than voted for the Democrats on the town council. Six times as many people voted for this project as voted for the Republicans on the town council. I believe you should say clearly that you're for the building and will work to make it happen. Remember, 5,800 people are watching. Your decision.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. My name is Joe Suggs, I live at 10 Sandpiper Drive. I want to speak on a bit of a different matter than the building at this point, and then maybe return to the building when it comes up on the agenda. But before I do that, I want to join with all of Bloomfield, and hopefully, all of the state of Connecticut, in offering my congratulations to Donna Landerman for her well-deserved and long overdue recognition for leading the effort to ensure that our children, our grandchildren, and our great-grandchildren will have safe and adequate water for their lives. Donna, thank you so much. I'd like to take a few minutes, Madam Mayor, to discuss what I think is a very pressing issue both for the state and for the town of Bloomfield, and that is the Medicare Savings Program. I'm sure that you're all aware that during the last legislative session, approximately $70 million was cut from this program, which helps provide low-income and disabled Medicare recipients by providing them with some benefits of the Medicaid program. As a result of the legislature's action, over 100,000 people throughout the state may lose the benefit of this program. It's my understanding that initial estimates were about 700 Bloomfield residents may lose their benefits, but more recent estimates by the Department of Social Services suggest that that number may go significantly higher than 700. Now, I think we may all agree that this is an absolutely essential program to ensure access to quality health care to many elderly and disabled residents in our town. I understand that as a result of this cut, many residents have contacted our Department of Social Services, very anxious, and some in panic about what the loss of this benefit may mean to their ability to simply maintain good health. Some low-income residents of our town may be forced to decide if they can afford a necessary surgery or life-saving medication if this program remains unfunded. Recently, the legislature has put their action on hold until March of next year, and it is certainly my hope that by that time, they will find the necessary money to fully fund the program. So I'm here tonight, Madam Mayor, to ask that you, as mayor, and the council as a body, call on our state senators and urge them to support continuation of full funding for the Medicare Savings Program. I believe that our senators are sympathetic to its continuation, and I did chat with Senator By when she was here, and she is very supportive. But I think it would be helpful if they heard from the leadership of our community to help reinforce the urgency of maintaining this critical program. In fact, I would all, I think it would also be helpful for those who are hearing it in the audience, and those who are viewing this at home, to contact our senators with a similar message. So with that, Madam Mayor, I thank you for your time, and I hope that the council will lend their collective voice of support for full funding of this critical program. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joan Geeter, I live at 14 Sheepaway. I've come here to urge a stop order on 330 Park at this time for the following reasons. All new projects of this magnitude need to be studied before the fact, not afterward. No planners ever looked at how 330 Park aligns with the economic plans for the town and its strategic goals. Should all three of the current occupants of 330 remain together, might it not make more sense to put some of them in their own quarters? We have a declining school population, perhaps some functions can be moved elsewhere. Bloomfield TV might better be housed as part of a new library. At the very least, we need to have answers to these questions before barreling forward. Once the real needs of the town are known, the citizens deserve real numbers for a top drawer senior center, a building that is honest as to its size and function. For instance, any new construction should be eco-sensitive and be able to serve as an emergency shelter. It is shortsighted not to include such features. A stripped-down building that is merely new but second-rate serves no one. The fiscal crisis in the state and the uncertainty about the impact of a new tax code in Connecticut make it imperative not to take on projects whose projected costs are underestimated and have never been assessed accurately. I noticed that even West Hartford has recent, although it's spent $250,000, has withdrawn its interest in the Yukon campus for some of the same reasons. As we all know, the initial price tag for 330 Park was based on Tai Su Kim's cost of a new library, and only after the fact was 330 Park shoehorned into the library number. In sum, given Connecticut's current budget shortfall, not to mention the likelihood that with a new tax law, Connecticut will receive less money from the federal government, now is not the time to stumble ahead into unknown expenses. It is highly probable that in the coming year, Connecticut towns will be called on to pick up even more of the cost of local education and health benefits. We've just heard that a moment ago. For all these reasons, I believe we should discontinue the 330 steamroller until we know what, as a town, we really need, and how much money we will have to fork over just to weather the revenue shortfall of the next few years. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Morris Boria, I live at 112 Bittersweet Hill in Wethersfield. I'm also a partner with the firm of McGivney, Kluger, and Cook in Hartford, we're at 20 Church Street. I'm here this evening because I represent the owner of 836 Park Avenue here in Bloomfield, the Wittenberry Mall. The Wittenberry Mall, the owner had filed a tax appeal regarding this property, which I understand is going to be coming before you this evening for resolution, you're going to be discussing that. And I wanted to appear this evening to just kind of give you some background regarding that from the owner's perspective. I was specially retained to try that particular tax appeal, and on November 15, we appeared before the tax court in New Britain. I had my client with me, Sean Bizel, who is a principal in the company that owns 836 Park, he flew in from California for the trial, and I had Bruce Hunter, who's an expert appraiser, and we were prepared to go forward. That morning, we met with Judge Levine in the tax court, and we were able to reach a tentative resolution, which I think you're going to be asked to approve this evening. And I want to urge you to do that. I understand you're going to talk to your own council later, I think you're going to be going into, you know, confidential session, but I did want to appear here to just give you the background. We were there, we were ready to begin. Myself, as I said, my name is Morris Boria, I'm a town attorney for South Windsor, I'm also a town attorney for Rocky Hills since 2004. I've tried many tax appeals, I've tried three in the last year alone, and from the meeting that morning with the court, I think that the resolution that's going to be presented to you this evening is a fair one, and I would urge you to approve it. Thank you for your attention, thank you.
Thank you.
Joan Geeter.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Town Council members. Ms. Waterhouse, good to see you again, and thank you for your time you spent last week. Once again, we're talking about 330 Park Avenue. Rather than go through exactly the same things again, I will tell you, from having checked in two different directions, by delaying as you did, the governor has put our grant on the back burner to the point where we probably have lost $5 to $6 million. That would have more than taken care of any shortfall that there would have been in the budget, but no one chose to ask anyone on the former council about it. No one chose to look at the same reasons we're not going forward on the library, no land. No one chose to find out why the building 330 Park Avenue is concerned with being a problem and dangerous. I met with the fired marshal and the chief of the Blue Hills Fire Department. The only reason that the building at 330 Park Avenue has not been condemned is that there was a building project set for it. Without the building project, the building will be condemned. You'll need to come up with $1,500,000 to put in a sprinkler system, which you do not come out of petty cash in the town. You go for referendum again. You screw it up, big time. Had you gotten your information straight, you would have discovered that there are serious safety issues in 330 Park Avenue. Some of you are more willing to spend on cars, bicycle routes, docking facilities, throwing money willy-nilly for a very small population, and ignoring the thousands of people who use 330 Park Avenue. It's not good enough. No matter how many times one of my former colleagues says it's good enough, his nose is going to grow like Pinocchio. He lies. If we get a grant—and that's a huge if—we have to look to February. Right now, you blew past December. It was in the bag. We had the money. You didn't choose to follow through on it. You didn't choose to follow through. And I've got a little experiment for all of you able-bodied members of council. Put pebbles in your shoes. Walk from the far end of the parking lot to the far end of the senior services building with the pebbles in your shoes, and tell me that it was comfortable, because it's going to be far more comfortable for you to do that than it is for some of the people who use the facility on a daily basis. They are in agony trying to get in there. Have you actually gone in when people are there? Councilwoman Waterhouse did, and she spoke to seniors, and they gave her a complete observation of what the needs were. She saw one of the groups meeting in a room that if you suffer from claustrophobia, you didn't want to be in there. Also, we didn't have any heat that day. You've tripped. You were too busy having a good time blaming the last council for being secretive and having caucuses. I believe you've had two already. We had four in two years. We pulled things—I was spoken to during the lighting of the Christmas tree by a lady whose son works for Niagara. She couldn't say enough good about the company and what they do. And she said, "You know, the ones that were complaining, it's their fault they didn't read agendas. It's their fault they didn't read the minutes of meetings. If they chose to look at everything as a conspiracy, they invented facts to make that Get out of it. Get over yourselves. Put the business of the town forward and put back the building committee's money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. My name's Keith Martin. I reside at 357 Park Avenue. I'll try to be brief, and I won't bore you with some of the reasons I came up here and spoke last time. I'm here for personal reasons. People probably say, "Well, he lives across the street from this project—projected building, and he's just concerned about his own window, his own issues as it relates to his house." Quite frankly, I am concerned about my own issues and my own house. But by a deeper meaning, this is about a neighborhood that I grew up in. I'm a senior as well. My family moved here in 1957, as I mentioned before. I was here when they had the little schoolhouse, which is still there, over 100 years old. So one thing I will say about Bloomfield, we build them well. They've moved that, obviously, since that time and relocated it. I can recall a time when—I was probably sneaking there when I was at elementary school at Metacomit or at the junior high school I attended, and we used to go over here to the old Bloomfield High School, which was still erected at that time. And they used to have bonfires in the back. Seniors, when it came time for their graduation, they were allowed to have a bonfire. Now it's the police station. So you might say, "Where are you going with all this?" I'm talking about a neighborhood. My concern is that the value of a neighborhood isn't necessarily as strong as the value of cheap land, because you decided on that location because it was inexpensive land. My neighbors next door used to be the Sloane Whites. It's now a convalescent home, as I already mentioned about where the police station is. And I understand, over time, things change. Bloomfield, when I was growing up, was a dry town. It's changed. We have liquor now, and most of you are looking at me like, "Really? You didn't know that?" Yeah. Bloomfield was a dry town forever. Didn't have a football team for a long time because a gentleman got hurt. So when I was growing up, they didn't have midget football. They just started a football program again. What I'm trying to say is Bloomfield has rich tradition. Neighborhoods within Bloomfield have rich traditions. My neighborhood had a rich tradition. And my concern is, in part, where there wasn't really enough discussion—and I agree with many of the things that were said—the lack of discussion that took place when that vote first happened is why we're here now. I'm here to preserve the neighborhood that I see shrinking, that I see, "Well, if we're looking at land because we don't have to pay for that land, and this is where they should have the location, well, then who knows what else? Are they going to move the library there? Are they going to move the Board of Ed? Yeah, the Board of Ed building, the old Wittenberry School, yeah, I know that too." Most of you probably, they just got here, don't know there was a Wittenberry School there. It's now the Board of Ed. Are you going to move the Board of Ed there because, guess what, we don't have to pay for that land? Of course, that's the land they had—they could have had used that land. My issue isn't with the senior center. Bloomfield has a great tradition. It was coveted as one of the top neighborhoods, one of the top communities in the country for senior living. Why? Because of all the time and energy that's put into it by council members, by Dunkaster, Seaberry, and the convalescent homes, one of which is next to me. One of the top communities in the country for senior living. And what bothers me to some extent, it's not that you're building a senior center. I'm all for a senior center. I'll use my taxes for it. My concern is one where you talk—where you're deciding to put it because it's a safety issue for children. And it should not be left up to the construction companies, and all due respect, as I've heard this, "Well, they'll take care of that." Since when did we leave it up to the construction companies to take care of our kids? Someone last week said, "Put up a fence. It'll keep the kids away." I think there may be a picture that one of my neighbors shared, that they were picking up some leaves just last week, and they piled all the leaves on the corner there where the entrance is to Carmen Air Race. And they had a truck sucking up the leaves. You should have seen the traffic backed up from that one little truck picking up just a pile of leaves. We're not talking about construction trucks coming through by God knows how many that are going to have to drive around that fence, drive up that access road where our kids go to school every day, back and forth, bringing dirt, bringing construction equipment, et cetera. We aren't talking about all the debris and things that are going to be flying my way and those people that live on Park Avenue from that. The location was never discussed. Yes, I heard there were 7,000 votes, and somebody said there were 5,000 how many people voted for this. From what they said last week, the vote passed by 112. Okay, so I don't know if it 5,000 voted, it passed by 112. Not exactly a landslide. I'm fighting for my neighborhood that I like to keep as a neighborhood. We went to the zoning committee. I came for that vote. And all due respect to those who are in the zoning committee, I guess you may be watching this, that was a joke. It's politics as usual. I had the same conversation with them as I'm having with you. They scratched their head and said, "Yeah, we don't really know." How is it your zoning committee doesn't know the reason why they picked that location? This is a residential neighborhood that they had to have a special meeting in order to put this building up because of the multiple uses of this building and the fact that this is a residential neighborhood. But the zoning committee didn't even know why they chose that location. They didn't know who chose that location. Really? Once again, a lack of information, communication not going back and forth. If they had done their homework, they could have picked a number of locations. What about revitalizing Granby Street? Guess what? Granby Street is still part of Bloomfield. It may be looked at as Hartford, but part of it is still Bloomfield. You've got buildings there that are rotting, that have been there for 20 years, and instead of revitalizing that and maybe taking some of that money and spending it for some land, "No, let's just use the land we have." Well, guess what? All due respect, where I live is not the center of Bloomfield. You decided to make some money on Harlem Estates over here. That was a central location. You gave—excuse me—you gave that to a contractor. Am I going over?
Yeah.
Okay. 30 seconds. So my point here is that we're talking about a community. I was told that it was $660,000 in the spring to upgrade that building, and now I've heard $37, $32 million to re-fabricate, okay? But I was told in spring, $660. You already spent more than that, and you haven't even dug the hole yet. And all due respect, Mr. McClary, I voted for you. Why? Because there were a lot of people that said, "Oh, you know, we don't want change. They don't know what they're doing." I voted for you because I could see change. But all due respect, when you were doing that survey and you said you got 40 people, you didn't come by my house. You didn't come by that person's house, and in the conversation that you had, you didn't mention where the building was going to be. Everybody's voting for the building. I'm not against the building. I'm against the location. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad Klein.
Brad Klein, 82 Tariff Hill Road. I'm really proud of the town council for this discussion. I'm proud of the citizenry for the quality of the investigation, and I think that it's important to remember, as the last speaker just beautifully said, the referendum that passed last year eked by. I know there are a lot of people today who mistake narrow margins or even losing margins for mandates, but that was not a mandate. It just eked by. The other thing is, the wording of that referendum was for a bond referendum. It wasn't to approve a particular building. So it's perfectly within the purview of the council to decide, as it's doing, whether to proceed with that building. I think it's extremely unfortunate how narrow the scope of the building committee was in its focus. The discussion of where to place it was hijacked from the discussion of the town and the town plan. The utilization figures that made it look like the senior center was being more heavily or way overwhelmingly used than the library are very questionable. I have a particular question about how the procedure for the fees and the architecture were processed by the building committee and by the town council, having—and this is no disrespect to the architect who's doing this professional job, but the contract very clearly has a series of steps for pricing. There's 15% upfront for schematic—I may get some of the details wrong—30% for program development, then 50% of the fees are the bid process and the documentation. This 5% for overseeing the bid, and another 10%, I think, for construction kind of oversight. Each of those constitutes a gateway, and there was no way that those steps should have each passed through without full oversight and report and approval by the town council. That was never done. What happens in the process of a contract is that you narrow the scope of design and you narrow the scope of pricing. They now know within about 5, plus or minus 5% or 6% what the building is going to cost. The idea that we need to spend $311,000 to narrow the scope a little bit more to get to a—not a final fee for the building. The final fee for the building won't be until the building is built, and that final fee will itself have a contingency of plus or minus 5%. So to spend $311,000, which is the next phase, without having a satisfactory building, listening to all of these scare tactics brought down as if, you know, the town has to make a decision now, completely irresponsible. And I think it's great that the council is taking its time and that the finance committee is exploring this carefully. I think the building is completely inadequate. The existing building has lots of problems. There are lots of—there's time to explore those reasonable alternatives, to patch it up, to fix it up, to get a town where we have services that are united. We now already know that the Wittenberry Mall is a key aspect of the town's future. It would be great to have a comprehensive discussion in services so that we could have the town center with vital services, with people coming together, rather than scattershot building and irresponsible decision-making, as has been the past, and I think it's great that the council is looking at this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council members. I'm here because I'm really disturbed about the way some things happen. I am a citizen who tried mightily, when things were happening, to try to get agendas. I called you, Mr. Schenk. I tried very hard, Joan. When you say agendas were printed or available, they weren't, just so you know, they weren't, nor were—the notes from meetings. I tried really hard to be a responsible citizen, and I found it difficult. So I just want to say, as one person, I have a difficult time hearing what you had to say, and I'm very upset by it. What happens with the building, I think, whatever happens, we have to come together as a community. And I just can't tell you how disturbed I am about this kind of shaming people, et cetera. I think we're better than that. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Kevin Hussein, 95 Woodland Avenue. Madam Mayor, council members, guests, residents. I'm here for a personal reason also, for the building committee. My kids use it, and I feel it's unsafe for them to use it, and I—the staff use it. I think it's pretty unsafe for them to use it. And, I mean, some people are getting personal. I'll give you my personal input. So I think it's unsafe. I think we need to look at something new, whichever way we move forward. That's my personal opinion. As an individual of the building committee, I just also want to say that it doesn't matter if the referendum was barely passed, passed, or whatever, it passed. I think the building committee was charged with what was given to us. I think we should continue that path, let the—put it back into the building committee to make that decision once the bids are out. Let the building committee tell you what we think should go once we get the bids after the advancement of the construction documents are out of bid. If you want to concurrently also do an updated study on the Senate book plan for the cause for rehab, you can do that independently or concurrently, so that way, in a few months, we can have— So that way, in a few months, we can have two numbers to compare and then you only have to make the decision. We will make a responsible decision and tell you what we should do. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jonathan Antoine, and council members, I apologize. My name is Jonathan Antoine, 1 Madam Lane. I just wanted to come up here and speak on behalf of the REC Center itself. I've been hearing about the state that the center is in and it's absolutely true. As a coach of the Bloomfield Raiders for 15 years, my son went through the program, graduated from Bloomfield and onto Wesleyan. Thank you Bloomfield for the education. I just want to say, when we have parent meetings in that facility, it is terrible. The floors are cracking, you don't know what's underneath those floors. We have our football equipment in those rooms, the smell in those upstairs rooms is terrible. The, I also coached basketball. It's just, the facility itself is just terrible. And it really needs to be either taken down or whatever you guys are going to do. I haven't been to all the meetings, so I can't really speak on it, some of the stuff you guys are doing, but I have heard folks talk about it. And this building is terrible. So my two sentences, I urge council to please look into that and find a place where our kids and our seniors can come together in a place where everybody can have fun and be a community, as the gentleman said, because that building is terrible. And I don't have only one address, I have 125 kids, so that's 125 addresses I have in Bloomfield.
All right.
And those are all my kids at the same time, because I am a coach. And I just want to thank you guys for just putting that out there because we really need someplace for these kids. So, that's it.
Thank you. That's it? Excellent. So at this time, I'm going to take the reports from the subcommittees. We will go with administration and education.
Madam Mayor, we have nothing from administration and education. The next meeting is January 2nd, so I hope that everyone will turn out and participate.
Golf?
We had our first meeting tonight and we discussed that we are going to go out for bids on the management of it for the first time and since the golf course started 17 years ago, so it's about time we did that exercise. We're very happy with the present management company, but we just think for the matter of principle, we should do that. We're also shifting the budget over so that it will be reviewed by the finance committee. The town manager is already aware of it, so we're having a slightly different shift here in the way the golf course committee works so that the town staff will be more involved. But it was an excellent meeting, those meetings are always well-attended and we have quite a following for our golf course, which is, as everybody knows, one of the best in the country. And it was noted that we have a quite a following of people who travel a long way to come here to play golf. And it's really exciting to have a destination golf course in town. And of course, it also serves as a town golf course, so we have a dual purpose here, which is interesting. And we've lost a lot of rounds to some of the golf courses locally who are really giving away rounds because they're trying to build up their usage and they have a problem. We don't, we make most of our money off those people who come a long distance to support. So we're able to enjoy, we don't have a difficult problem because of this, although we would like to improve the usage by the golf course, by the people in town. Thank you.
Finance?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I gave a report on the meeting, the November meeting of the finance committee at the special meeting last week, so the report on that will appear in the notes in the minutes for that meeting.
Is your microphone?
No. Thank you. I made the comment that I had given a full report of the November finance committee meeting at the special meeting last week, a week ago Monday, a week ago today, on the 330 Park project. And that, those notes from the finance committee meeting will appear in the, both the special meeting and the finance committee meeting minutes. The next meeting of the finance committee is a week from today at 5:45. It'll be the last meeting of the finance committee at 5:45, starting next year, where it will be at 6:30. And that will be, we will be talking about the audit. So anyone who would like to come and hear about that, please put that on your calendar. Thank you.
Public safety?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no, nothing on the public safety calendar. We will start back at the beginning of the year, meeting, I look forward to meeting the chiefs and getting to work. But I want to congratulate the officers who were promoted and recognized last week for their outstanding job and their service to Bloomfield. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Committees on committees?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the committee on committees will be holding its first meeting on the 18th of this month, it's a Monday night. We have our first opportunity to see where the vacancies are and see if we can find people to fill important positions in our community. Thank you.
Land use and economic development?
The following night on the 19th, the land use and economic development meeting will be there first. This is going to be kind of an introduction, kind of a way of putting forward issues and opportunities that have come before these organizations, the planning of TPC and the Economic Development Commission. So we can put on one list all the things that had been discussed, all the things that we have to look forward to and perhaps get down to prioritizing some of them so we can focus our efforts. So that meeting will be held the 19th, I believe. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. At this time, we're going to go into our old business. And before we start discussing that, I just want to make a comment. The important thing about the council is we wanted to make sure that we heard the community. Yes, there was a vote, a referendum done, and as someone stated, whether it was 120-something votes that it passed by or just one vote that it passed by, it did pass. However, as a council, we wanted to make sure that we also got the information that was helpful in us making a decision. So I just want to publicly say thank you to everyone that came out and spoke, those in favor and those against. It's a little disheartening, however, if someone has the thought, just because we want to gather information that we are all Republicans or that we are trying to hurt the town in any way, or that we are trying to get back at the previous council, all of those ideations are false, absolutely and completely false. As a council, we wanted to make sure that we had deliberation. As a council, we wanted to go and tour the building. Most of us have been in the building before, most of us have children that have been in the building or worked in the building, but most of us also wanted to get up to speed on the project, the use of the building, the cost of the building. So we thought it prudent to take some time and to gather some information. I don't believe that that's a bad thing. What you won't find at this council is group think or false consensus. We will do our due diligence in making decisions. And with that, old business 1516-85C. Discussion impossible, action regarding the Alvin and Beatrice Wood Human Services Facility Project.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Goff.
After the consideration and reflection on the recommendation adopted unanimously by the finance committee on, subcommittee on November 28th, 2017, and the public comments made at the December 4th, 2017 meeting on the Alvin and Beatrice Wood Human Services Facility Project, we move the following four points. First, restart the full bid process for the project with a remaining cost estimate of $312,785, thereby obtaining an accurate total cost for the project. Also in that, to notify the finance subcommittee as soon as the price, the results of the bidding, for the demolition and abatement of the existing building is known. Two, authorize the town manager to expend up to $50,000 from the council contingency fund to engage Moser, Pyle and Nelson, current architects on the project, to update the building's deferred maintenance cost as defined per the Senate Book Report from May 2016. This will also include the cost update, all code and accessibility issues, and any necessary architectural updates. Three, direct the mayor to expand the scope of the Human Services Building Committee to begin gathering citizen input and evaluating the feasibility and estimated cost of options beyond the constraints placed on the project by the November 8th, 2016 bonding referendum. These should include, but not be limited to, performing deferred maintenance to extend the life of the building until funding is available, renovating the existing building to like-new, considering other features in the new building, e.g. showers, generators, solar panels, auditorium, indoor track. Consideration of an indoor pool, including in that, the different ownership management models be looked at. For example, the West Hartford model of Cornerstone, where Cornerstone is managed by an independent company, but the town has an interest in it. We may want a pool, but we may not want to own a pool. And consideration of the best combination locations of the services currently housed in the Alvin and Beatrice Wood Human Services Facility, which could generate a recommendation to build more than one new building in different locations. And four, note that the 22.3 million ceiling for the current project includes all phases of the project, i.e. the new building, demolition and abatement of the existing building, and restoration of the old building site to usable soccer athletic fields. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Was that a motion?
That is a motion.
Okay, and I know that I'm supposed to repeat the motion, but there was just so much there. I hope everybody was listening. Do I have a second?
A second, Madam Mayor.
Any discussions?
Yes, I was disappointed. I have a strong feeling that the new building, which is only, I don't know, 55,000 square feet, I've heard 52, I've heard 50,000, is too small. And I have seen so many things, that projects that have been crossed off, that are presently in the present building, that would not have space in the new building. And I've had the impression, and it isn't very scientific, but I admit it's there, that we're trying to squeeze a lot from this 92,000 square foot building into a 55,000 square foot building. I've heard all the story about wasted space, but I still don't believe that we've got a big enough building to really, it just doesn't make sense to me. I would like that motion to include the possibility of adding at least 5,000 square feet to the new building, or maybe 10. Is that possible to amend that, to include that consideration? Because I think that's important, I really do. I know that will cost more, just as for the pool, but I just don't believe, well, I've heard and seen the numbers, that you're really going to have a building big enough to do the job. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion, there's already a motion on the floor and it's already been seconded.
Asking if the amended, a friendly amendment to include that.
Amending the motion.
May I ask a question, Madam Mayor, of the councilor?
I have a question.
If, oh, sorry. So we are expanding the charge of the building committee to include lots of other options. Is that agreeable to put that under the other options to consider?
Yes.
I am fine accepting that motion.
Do we have, do we have a second? Are you second? Okay.
So, Councilman McClary?
So, so, Madam Mayor, I keep hearing that the current building is too small, from the building committee. I go back to the Senate Book's plan and there's section B where it says the current usage is right after the section where they did the analysis of the library potentially going to 330 Park Avenue site. And it says the total area of the facility is 90,138, of which 51,583 square feet has been allocated for present use. 7,500 is currently the auditorium. It's not too small, Madam Mayor, so the notion that it's too small is ridiculous. You have 31,000 square feet of that building that is not even being used. Madam Mayor, the report is here, the previous council paid for this, the citizens of Bloomfield paid for this study. We should use it. And to add an additional 5,000 square feet and an option for the building committee, it's just inflating the price. It's going, it's going to present some scenarios that we can't even afford. So, Madam Mayor, I would ask the gentleman who made the motion to not accept that friendly amendment, or I don't think I can fully support adding unfunded mandate onto the building committee, because they're going to come up with a different price that we just simply can't afford, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Well, I think I have to agree with Councilman McClary. I don't know what additional 5,000 square feet would be, what are we used for if the building is designed presently to accommodate all those who said they're going to use it? And that just seems like just throwing something out there that just can stick to the walls, but it's not going to fly. And I don't understand to do that. We thought we, the resolution that was raised by Councilman Goff tried to take into account all the exigencies under this project, so that when we get to the end of it, we'll have a clear understanding of how much it's going to cost, whether we can afford it, whether the voters need to vote again on an additional referendum, what the cost of renovation might be, if we have, if in fact, the numbers come in so high that we can't afford to build new. And that gives us the most option, the best option, I think, that we'll have to deal with this project at the other end. If we throw an additional 5,000 square feet to be used for whatever, that adds more to the study cost, it adds more to the process, and I don't think that that's helpful at this point, so I would.
Has everyone spoken on this?
I was just going to rebut that the 31,000 square feet of the present building are not being used, that still leaves 61,000 square feet being used, and another 5,000 square feet added to the 55 would just about bring it up to that. But this was only put in, just like the pool, as a separate option. So I don't see how it's, we're not jamming it down the throats and failing the basic number, we're just saying what would it cost if we did do that. So I don't see why it's any different from any swing ball option to it.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Goff?
I agree with Councilman Merritt on this. The point, and I want to make sure that everyone is clear, we are not asking, we are not mandating that anyone spend any money, any significant money, or any real money, to look at these options. A lot of these options have been considered, we will have a square footage number, et cetera. I think the two things that are important here, as we've heard over and over from citizens comment, the building committee, regardless of, the job they have done has been a very narrow job. The building committee was given a specific mandate, they could not go outside the lines of that mandate. They need to consider options. We know, for example, that there are soccer programs that use that, that use the space, they currently are not going to have space to house their equipment anymore. We know, for example, that they probably will not have access to restrooms. I think that, you know, if we're going to build something with fields, that they would have access to a restroom from the outside in. I don't, I don't envision any of this being included in an architectural, a detailed architectural study. I think what's important here is that if we get to the point where the core cost of the project exceeds the 22.3 million and we have to look at alternatives, we may end up in the, we have to fix what we have, because that's all the money we have, but if we have to go out for another bond referendum or consider further financing, then we need to get the, we need to get the building and the facilities that the town needs not be shoehorned into a number that is artificially created. I would also ask the building committee as part of this, and we're not trying to be, we're not trying to be exhaustive in what we're asking them, but I've mentioned to several people that although there's been a live discussion with the directors of the services that are the services that are in the building, which is great, we need to make sure that those services, everything is adequate for those services. I do know that there has not been a lot of discussion with some of the other organizations in the community as to what they need with respective meeting rooms and space for that. And I think that that needs to be something the building committee looks at, to make sure that we have a community center that really serves the entire community. So if this were a, at 5,000 square feet, it would cost us, you know, 100,000 bucks, I would agree with councillor Mann that we do not want up the cost of this anymore. But I think just in terms of looking at the space needs of the building from the building committee's point of view, I think that's a perfectly reasonable request. Thank you.
Are there any more discussions? Councillor Mann? Well, no one else is.
Okay, well, yeah, if by saying 5,000 square feet, you're allowing for some expansion of the project to meet maybe future goals, if we're going to do this over again through another referendum, I can see that, I can see that thinking. But why 5,000 feet? Where'd that come from? I don't know. Is that going to house a pool? Is it going, where did you get that number, Joe? Mr., I'm sorry, councillor McGough.
If they said 92,000 square feet, but 31,000 wasn't used, that means that 61,000 was used. So I'm going up roughly 5,000. I'm just saying, I think this thing's too tight, and yeah, I would like to, I think, we need a wriggle in here for the kind of things that were mentioned, and it's just as an option, it's not something that has to be included in the basic, yes, so it's not, I just think we ought to know that.
Councillor?
I was just under the, um, sorry. We had gotten an email from the actual architect stating that he even thought that the building was a little too small for what our needs were, and that the budget wasn't going to fit regardless. So if the budget's not going to fit our needs of a town, why don't we just do it right? Why don't we get the building, if it's going to cost 30,000, or 30 million dollars, fine, we do need a new building. Great, it's going to cost 30 million dollars, why don't we just go for that, instead of trying to cram it into 22 million, which doesn't, that was a budget for the library, great, we could have built a really great library for 22 million dollars, but the building that we need to provide service for our town with all of these, the social services and our kids and our seniors, I think deserves the 30 million dollar budget that it needs. Yes, maybe, you know, we can use the building plans that we currently have and elaborate on that a little bit. There's got to be some maneuver that we can do.
Councillor McQuary?
I think the email from the architect was a little mischaracterized. If we could get, he's in the audience, could we get clarification about not having enough money or space? Because I think that needs to be clarified, because I served on the building committee, and I know he talked with the users, he did a program study of the current program, and based on the directors, I think it meets their needs now and for the future. And I'm not trying to, I guess it may be coming off wrong that I'm trying to cram this building into 22 million dollars, I'm not trying to do that. But I want us to use the study because, that Senate book did, because I assure you that nothing is going to change, just like nothing changed two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, four weeks ago, nothing is going to change with the current building. It's ultimately going to come down to whether we want to, do we have to go back out to referendum, or do we stop this project as a council? So could we get further explanation from representatives from the building committee, Madam Mayor, if that's okay with you?
So what I would really like to do, is we have two motions on the floor, so I would like for us to go ahead and vote on the amendment, and then go ahead and vote on the main motion.
Madam Mayor, can I request an insertion in the amendment?
An amendment to the amendment?
The amendment to the amendment, there's one amendment, the 5,000 square feet. Make it plus or minus, to give you the little bit of, if it's a little too small, or it's a little too big, you just lock it into 5,000, we get locked in. Maybe 7,000, maybe 8,000, maybe 3,000. I think that's a reasonable, I think that's, Mr. Mann?
Okay, so, as the motion stands, it was that long motion presented by councillor McGough, and we have amended to add plus or minus 5,000 square feet, okay? That's the motion on the floor.
And I accept that.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The motion carries. Praise the Lord. Now, the base motion was councillor McGough's long motion for the, for us to go on to the big process, for the town manager with a ceiling, to get some information from the architects, to see how it's going to, to see what we can, what kind of cost it would be to update the building, and then for the mayor to go ahead and give the building committee some further directives. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, motion carries.
Madam Mayor, I'm confused. I thought we only had one motion that was amended with a friendly amendment, and that's all we were voting on. Why are we voting on two motions?
I needed to, what I did was I divided the questions, so that we were very clear on what we were doing going forward. I want us to be very clear, especially with this project.
That's a problem, and I don't know what I voted on now.
Okay, so right now, right now, we have a main motion, right? The building committee is going to do exactly what councillor McGough suggested in his, he has a whole printout here, everybody, that will become part of the meeting minutes. And then we added the friendly, that we're adding to his motion, so we voted that everybody wanted to add the friendly.
Yes.
And then we voted that we're going to go with the.
Oh, okay, that clarifies it. So you're saying we, one of the votes was to vote to amend the amendment.
Add the friendly, yeah.
Okay, got you. Okay, then in that case, my vote's.
Stands, all right. Are we clear out there? Are we clear out there? All right. So we're going to move on. 1718-17, consider and take action regarding appointment of the town attorney. Councillor Mann?
Madam Mayor, I move to refer this to the Education and Administration Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any discussions? So there's a motion on the floor to refer the town attorney to the Administration and Education Subcommittee. All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. 1718-18, consider and take action regarding appointment of the town treasurer. Councillor Mann?
Same motion would be in order to refer this to committee for further discussion and report back to us with a recommendation.
I second that, Madam Mayor.
That's Admin and Education.
Admin and Education.
Is there any discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. So we're going into our new business. And in the art of transparency, I will recuse myself from the votes on the next couple of items as they come from my employer, the Health District. So 1718-24, consider and take action regarding ordinance on public swimming pools.
Madam Mayor, I would like to move that we accept this item and refer to the Administration and Education Subcommittee.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? One. The ayes have it. 1718-25, consider and take action regarding an ordinance on food and food handlers.
Madam Mayor, I again make a motion that we accept item 1718-25 and refer it to the Administration and Education Subcommittee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who was the second?
Kevin.
All those opposed, nay. One abstentions, the ayes have it. 1718-27, consider and take action regarding adoption, I'm sorry, 26, consider and take action regarding an ordinance on regulating barbering, hairdressing, cosmetology, nail, tanning, massage, tattoo, and body piercing, so on.
Madam Mayor, again, make the motion that we accept this and refer it to the Administration and Education Subcommittee.
Any second?
Second.
Question?
Discussion? Discussion.
Discussion on this, I would like, I think this should go before the land use Subcommittee as well, because there's probably a lot of zoning reference involved in this particular item, as to, I mean, I would think. I'm not sure what issues have caused these ordinances to be created, but I think that might be something of a zoning value that should be discussed and we can get a joint recommendation.
Madam Mayor, I think most of these are being generated by the West Hartford Bloomfield Health District in response to things. If it's necessary, we can always include the Land Use and Economic Development Subcommittee in the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager, and I retract my motion.
So we go back to the first motion of referring this to the Admin and Education Subcommittee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. One abstention, the ayes have it. So 1718-27 is consider and take action regarding adoption of council subcommittees' meeting schedule for 2018.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt the schedules as presented for the seven council subcommittees for 2018.
Second. Any discussions?
I think that's.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. 1718-28, consider and take action concerning settlement of tax appeals.
Right, I would ask that that be deferred until after the town attorney can make a presentation under executive session.
Uh, we're all in favor? Okay, all right. Report from the town manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to comment briefly on the December 2 lighting of the lights in the center of Bloomfield, the parade, and other activities that were associated with it. I can't think of another event that has been more successful in my brief history here with the town over the last four to five years. Well over 500 people attended, I think in the past, we were lucky to get maybe 100, and the parade was certainly entertaining, as well as the refreshments that were available, and the performances that were made by the various groups on the stage. Other than that, I really don't have anything more to say. We're starting to get into our budget schedule, and we'll be starting to review at the manager level some of the capital projects over the next several weeks, really starting after the holiday period. I'd like to wish everybody a happy holiday, and holidays, I guess, coming up, and our next meeting won't be until January, so, thank you.
Approve of the minutes? We have the November 13, 2017 minutes?
So move.
From the last one?
November 13. Oh, I'm sorry, skip the financial report.
Oh, we haven't approved it?
Is there a correction?
Yes, I think, well, I know, for two of the votes, it has me down as abstaining, and I voted against it. It was the.
It has me as abstaining from the tabling of the town attorney and the town treasurer, and I voted against that. If we could just make that correction, I would greatly appreciate it, Madam Mayor. Yes, from the original. And the tabling of 330 Park, I voted, no, excuse me, to stop the funding, I voted against that, Madam Mayor.
I will accept that as a friendly amendment to my motion to accept the next.
Thank you.
Any other corrections? So we're going to accept the minutes with noted corrections?
Yes.
All right. Are we all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The November 27 minutes?
I move to accept the November 27 now.
No corrections?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I did skip over the financial report. Not here?
Did he have no money or?
Okay. He was not here, right, but I thought he was going to present.
I'll be guessing.
He's going to present. Okay, so we won't have the financial report this evening. Council comments, let's start with councillor McQuary.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like to wish everyone a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Fonz, Hanukkah, Sostes, all of the above. Madam Mayor, I have no comments. I just wish we could continue down the path of doing what's in the best interest for the citizens of Bloomfield. Thank you.
Councillor McGough?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also wish everyone happy holidays, whatever you celebrate. And I did want to make a comment, and perhaps the mayor will also comment on this, we did go to the ribbon cutting for the new Airland Flats apartment last Thursday, and it was a great vibe. It was, it was an exciting vibe in Bloomfield. I know we, you know, there are many of us who are unhappy with the actual design of the building, but it is nice to see some activity near the town center, and we hope to continue that, to increase it, and ultimately to have that kind of activity. It felt like, it felt like you were in West Hartford in a good way. I know, I know there are a lot of people in Bloomfield who say we don't want to be West Hartford, but we do, we would like the activity and the vibrancy that we're seeing, that we see in West Hartford. So that was, that was a neat event, and I think we all had a good time. Thank you.
Councillor Mann?
Well, first I'd like to remind the citizens of Bloomfield that this council gave them a tax break its first meeting, when we refused to accept a supplemental tax bill on your automobiles. And subsequent meetings, we're having to deal with high expenditures for projects like the Human Services Building, and we are concerned. We are concerned that we can continue without giving, adding to your tax bill next year. So we've taken the time to give it the thought it needs, and I think the mayor expressed it very well. We're looking for ways to accomplish the objective of providing quality space for people that need that space. We all know how terrible the condition the existing building is, but that's not news to anybody, it's been that way for quite some time. So frankly, we're trying to do our best so that we can make Bloomfield a better place. Our goal is to unite people, not divide people. If people have differences of opinion, we welcome them, we want to hear them, we prefer more information than emotion, but we can take both. So thank you very much, and happy holidays.
Deputy Mayor?
Madam Mayor, first I want to thank our DPW staff to get us through our first snowstorm. My daughter was excited, she made her first snowman of the year. So it's kind of raining a little crooked now because of the weather, so. But I also want to wish our residents a happy and safe holiday, whatever you celebrate, and be safe, and also be mindful of your neighbors. There's a lot of folks within our community who may not be fortunate to have something, so please extend a hand and help your neighbors. Thank you.
Councillor Motorhouse? Councilman Motorhouse?
I want to, uh, wish everybody...
Thank you.
I wanna wish everybody a happy holiday and I wanna say that our differences is what makes our community stronger. Thank you.
Councilman DiLorenzo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I think we had a really good discussion tonight, I, I enjoyed it. Better than it was on December fourth when I was doing it over the phone, so that was a little bit of a challenge, but, um, I, I think I, I like the, you know, the discussion tonight and the, the direction that we're now taking and the way we're heading. I think, you know, we've made a lot of good points on both, both sides, one against. And, um, you know, I, I agree, unfortunately, it's gonna take a little more time to really figure out where things should, should land. And, um, you know, I, I totally agree, we need a, we need a new building, we need something new for our seniors, our social services and our youth. So, uh, you know, we just have to come to the right, the right decision and, um, ultimately that may result in, you know, a change in the mill rate. You gotta also remember that we have a, a very large capital improvement plan and we put a lot of money into the capital improvement plan. So if we have to come to a decision about, well, do we put one point five million into the road repairs for DPW next year or the year after, maybe we won't be able to afford a million and a half into the road repairs because of other expenses that we have. So if our debt service goes up, something has to come down. I mean, we, the money has to come from somewhere. So just want everybody to keep that in mind as Mr. Shanks says, we head into the budget season. So we will have open meetings to talk about the budget. It starts in March, it's already on the calendar and the public is welcome to attend, so please, please do. I think everyone, oh, of course, I missed the parade, I was out of town and that is a time when there were a lot of people there, so that would, I'm sure it was very nice and, uh, sorry to have missed that. Uh, but I also noticed that we're now working on the town green. I don't know why they chose December to dig up the sidewalks, but, um, it, it's good to see that progress. I think that will work well with the apartments, the Airland Flat Apartments and having that be done. And, uh, it will also work well with Philly Park because they're gonna be using a lot of the same streetscape, the same lampposts, will also be part of the town green. So I think it will all start to blend together and make our downtown, our town center, rather, uh, much more viable and much more enjoyable and walkable. So with that, again, I'd like to wish everyone, as everyone has already said, the happiest of holidays and again, please remember the food bank, the Bloomfield Food Bank or the Fuel Bank, it's that time of the year when the heat's on. So, um, I hope everyone enjoys and has a happy and healthy prosperous new year and we will see you back here in January. Thank you.
Councilman Merritt?
Thank you. I think one of the real keys to the success of the parade, as we call it now, the Winterfest, was the great, uh, Masters of Ceremonies we had, uh, they, uh, we had, they were the real spark, so. Almost as good as a lot of fire engines coming through town. Um, I, I, I've enjoyed, I enjoyed that. And it was, um, it was, I think there were three or four, five or eight people there. Of course, it's, it's great to put a parade on and nobody else is doing it, but, um, somebody has killed children at home, I think. Um, I, I have been very concerned about, I was very overjoyed when the new council came in and said, "We'd like to save money and we'd like to cut taxes," because that's one thing we really haven't made much attention to. And I was very happy, I, I almost astounded when they refused to send out that tax bill. I mean, that was six hundred thousand dollars that they could've blamed on the last council, did not take, that they, I, I just thought that was great. And, um, I think it was great when I heard that they were going to work for other ways of saving money and one of the things that I thought we were spending more money than we had to on was the effort on Three Thirty Park. And, uh, it seemed to me that we would be better off taking the approach of doing just urgent repairs to buildings, uh, at this time because of what's going on in the state, what's going on in the city of Hartford, we just don't have a clear way ahead for the last, next five years. We can't simply just maintain business as usual and build new buildings if we don't really have to. And we built, we rebuilt four schools successfully economically and renewed them and nobody, nobody is saying they're in the best for being rebuilt. And I thought that was successful, I pushed to, we now will plan to eventually do a live yard that way, public works is a rebuild. I have become a, a strong believer because of the evidence I've seen that rebuilding saves a lot of my recycling buildings, there's a lot more years left. And whatever mud you throw at Three, the old Three Thirty Park, it's got good floors, it's got good walls, it's a sound structure and that you can do the same things to that that we've done to the other buildings, our top of, our ice floor is even older than that. And we did a good job there. They spent over thirty million dollars bringing it to as new and, but they had the same problem with the ceilings being there and they dealt with it. We, we've done all this and we proved over and over again that that is the way to go. And for us not to do that with Three Thirty Park seems like a waste of money to me and to give up some kind of square footage in the process makes it even more ridiculous to me. So we could, I would see a process where we could put, say, fifteen million dollars and take care of the urgent things now and make that a very nice place. I mean, two years ago, they would've been happy to have the roof repaired. Now we're talking about doing all sorts of glorious things. Well, hey, I mean, I don't think we can afford to do that. We could, we could spend fifteen million dollars today, save ten million or maybe fifteen million and, and then take care of the urgent matters and then, another, after the next five years have passed, in twenty twenty-three, we have all sorts of bonding capacity, we can do a lot of things. We don't for the next five years. And we, we would be very smart to really be careful with our spending. Well, we, we gotta start doing that, think that way and I didn't hear many of the people coming up saying, "Oh yeah, we'll be happy to have tax increases." Well, that's what's gonna happen if we don't start thinking that way. And we gotta, we have to find ways to save money. So I, I hope in our ongoing decisions, we start finding more ways like that, not tech, not sending out that tax, because if you don't find ways of providing excellent service without spending more money, and I think there are ways of doing that, just being smart, we, we're gonna have taxes continue to go up. Thank you. And Merry Christmas.
Wow, thank you, thank you very much. So a lot was said, um, the, um, services at the police department last Friday was wonderful, as always. The parade was amazing, our first time, I felt like I was in a winter movie, it was so very good. Um, we've heard a lot and this is our, is this our fourth council meeting? It's our fourth council meeting and we're two days shy of a month of being on town council. So we've, we've had a lot of conversation, right? Which isn't a real bad thing because you wanna hear from people and that's what we said. We told our residents that we would listen to what they had to say, that we would have dialogue with them and that we would try to get as much information as possible to make the best decision as possible. And I think that's what we're doing. We're not gonna make everyone happy, as Councilor Merritt just pointed out, he was happy with us one day, disappointed with us the next day, that's just a cycle of life. What we're trying to do is we're trying to do what's in the best interest of the town and we want to make this process as fair, as equitable and as open as possible. I thank Councilman, Councilman Merritt for voicing his pleasure and his displeasure. Can't no one say that he said something behind our backs because he said it right here for the betterment of the council and for the betterment of our town. So I'm going to plead, I'm, I'm very sorry that the chairs that were just so full a few minutes ago, um, that they're now empty, right? Because we got what we needed to get, we heard what we needed to hear and then we left. We didn't, we didn't go through the whole process and sometimes the details are in the process. So what I would like is if anyone had any constructive criticism, we're all here. My daughter said to me, "Mom, I'm just a little bit, um, Larry here, our address is public, your phone number's public." She goes, "I don't, was that a part of the deal?" Um, so we're accessible. And why am I saying this? In the spirit of transparency, there's letters going around, um, being very critical of this new council. In my heart of hearts, I wanna say, where was the town watch years and years and years ago? But that's in my heart of hearts, I won't say it out in public. Um, but what I will say is, whatever it is that's going to help to make a better Bloomfield, we would like to hear it. And if you don't wanna come to council and talk about it, give us a call, send us an email, our doors are open. We ran because we wanted to make an impact because we saw that there were some issues and we didn't wanna be a part of the problem, we wanted to be a part of the solution transparently. Transparency means that you can see through what's going on, that you're at the table when the discussions are taking place, that's transparency. So in all transparency, if there's something that you would like to say to the council, if there's some disagreements that you have with the council, if there's some encouragement that you would like to bring to the council, please do so. We're here and I believe, sitting in this chair for the last four council meetings, we've kinda been battered and bruised, but we're still here because we're still committed to helping to make this the best town possible because what unites us is greater than what divides us. So with that, I would like to say Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah, seasons greetings, the best of the season, enjoy it with your families and be as, um, I've said before, be considerate of someone else and a very happy and prosperous new year. Thank you. At this time, we're going to be moving into executive session.
Madam Mayor, we move to executive session?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So big.
Including the town attorney?
I'm sorry, the town attorney will be included in that executive session.
The town manager.
And the town manager.